Good morning. Before we begin, can I ask senators, is it agreed to allow communications to take photos during our hearing this morning? Agreed, thank you. I see we have quorum, so we will begin. Honorable senators, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here today and for those of you following on Facebook Live as we continue our discussion on the issues relating to the human rights of prisoners in the correctional system. Today's meeting will focus on the experiences of black people in federal prisons as we honor Black History Month. Before we begin, I would like all senators to introduce themselves and we will begin on my right.
Salma Tavla-Jan from Toronto, Ontario.
And I'm Jane Cordy, I'm from Nova Scotia. Welcome.
And Kim Pate from Ontario, and I just want to take this opportunity, it's Valentine's Day, and one of the histories of Valentine's Day is that one of the first Valentine's card was apparently sent by a prisoner to a warden's, yeah, or a priest or a warden's, so it, I think it's appropriate that we're studying prisoners' human rights, says on Valentine's Day and the first Valentine's card was actually sent by a prisoner, so thank you, sorry for that very long introduction.
Thanks, Kim. Nancy Hartling from New Brunswick, welcome, welcome.
And I'm Wanda Thomas-Benard, Chair of the Committee, and I'm from Nova Scotia. So for our first panel today, we are pleased to welcome by video conference Teresa Halfkenny, who's from the Regional Ethnocultural Advisory Committee, and she is the Chair of the Atlantic Region for Correctional Services Canada. Now, I want to just alert everyone that we actually may have some technical problems. There are some problems with the sound, and so if we're, we'll try our best, we'll start with you, Ms. Halfkenny, and then we're going to hear from Natalie Charles. If we're not able to continue today because of the sound, we will reschedule you for another time. But we will start, and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present to the committee today. I am the chairperson of the Regional Ethnocultural Advisory Committee in the Atlantic Region.
I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Halfkenny, I'm so sorry, but they are unable to do the translation, so we will not be able to take your testimony today. I am so sorry.
Okay.
I'm so sorry about this, so.
That is okay.
So we will.
Technology.
Yes, it's wonderful when it works. So it's a problem with translation, and so we cannot proceed if the translators cannot hear. So we will be in touch with you to reschedule you.
Okay.
Okay?
That sounds good.
Now, if she, just hold on one second, let me confer with the clerk for a second.
She can stay on the screen and watch her.
So if you want to and have the time to stay on the screen and listen to Ms. Charles and her presentation, you're welcome to do that.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, thank you. So we're very pleased, we're very pleased for our second speaker, that you're actually here early, and that you'll be able to speak to us now. And so we are pleased to have Ms. Natalie Charles joining us here in Ottawa. She's going to speak to us about her experiences as a person who has been a prisoner in the federal system, and she is supported by Ms. Sophia Brown-Ramsey, whom we met last week when we were in Kitchener, and she's also with the Ethnocultural Advisory Committee in the Ontario region. So Ms. Charles, we will invite you now to share with us, and I know that you want to talk with us about your story, your experience, and then senators will have questions. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for having me. My name is Natalie Charles, and I am from Toronto, and I just want to share my unique story with you because I have been involved with the young offenders, I was a young offender and I was also charged as an adult as well, so my story's a little bit different. So just to tell you a little bit about myself, I was in, I got involved with the, sorry, I'm just a little nervous.
That's okay.
So my voice is a bit shaky, but I was involved with the, with the law at a very young age, roughly, it could have been maybe 14 years old, 13, 14 years old, and it went up until I was about in my mid twenties. Now, as a young offender, I was very foolish. I had a boyfriend, and I, he did his things, and I ended up getting myself into problems as a result of fighting and just being disobedient. As an adult now, what had happened was I had ended up getting myself involved with some things that I shouldn't have done, which also led me to being incarcerated as well. Being incarcerated, it, it's a balance of both, it taught me both positive and negative. The people, starting with the positive, it doesn't, like, with being, with it being positive, you don't want to go back in there, you don't want to disappoint your family, disappoint yourself. The negative aspect of it is that you meet other people that are either involved in what you are or worse than what you are actually involved in, so then you start making, like, connections with other people that are actually inside of the jail, which is not a good thing. Also with the, with, I find that there's a lot of, like, there was a lot of racism, there was a lot of violence, there was a lot of deception that was within side of just the, the jail system itself, where, like, if they knew that you came from a certain area or they didn't like you, they would put you on a certain cell to allow you to get yourself hurt. There, there was, there's so much, there's so many things as a, like, there's just, what else is there to say, there's so much. What it taught me, most importantly, is that this is just, having a life of getting in trouble is not the way to be, it's not, it's not, it's not good. I am 39 years old, and I'm struggling right now, this criminal record of mine is like a cloud over my head that cannot seem to go away. I, I try everything in my power, like, right now, I'm currently enrolled in the paralegal program, and I'm going to be done in April. I have put a pardon in, prior to this time here, I put a pardon in, and it was actually, I waited five years to hear something back. When I did, it wasn't great news, unfortunately, however, it didn't stop me, I re- I reapplied again, and I have another year, which is going to be coming in August, for me to hear something. Right now, I'm nerve-wracked, I have placement that's coming up, my record is a huge, like, a huge damper in it because I, there's placements that, the placements that I want are all government-run, and they all want criminal record check. I feel like I'm blocked, I'm stopped, but there's all, the way I look at it, wherever there's a will, there's a way, so I'm trying my best now to, you know, overcome my past because my past has really affected my future. When you think that you're, you're, you're okay, it's just the fact of the record, the criminal record, it's, it's a huge, huge, a huge effect on, on people's lives, and I wish that there were some either programs that were available, like, let's say, to, to, like, young offenders. I remember when I was younger, they had an African-Canadian court worker that used to come, and it was a little different, well, quite different, from, let's say, the John Howard Society or the Elizabeth Fry Society, which was more geared towards, like, my culture, and they would help us with more extent than what they would, than what Howard Johnson would do, because Howard Johnson, let's say, had a list of dockets that they had to go through, so if it was 30 people that were inside, they had the 30 people to speak with, whereas the African-Canadian court worker just, it just addressed our community. So we got more time with them, more time to explain, like, what was going on, more time for them to help us to find either sureties or, you know, things that we, calling for your lawyer, things like that. I, I had, it's, it's, it's a lot, it's, like, I had, when I was incarcerated, my, my sister was actually maybe two years old, and that's what had me turn my life around. I did not want to have my sister coming to this type of environment, seeing me locked up, seeing me just in a dark place in my life, and it was, it's, you know, I, I've learned a lot, I can smile now with you guys now because I've, I've come so far, and I want so much more out of life, and I really hope that there's something that could be put in place for, you know, African-Canadians, that we can, we can have a little more support with, like, you know, even, like, support in, in all different areas, like, you know, there's, there's time, like, even supporting the school systems to let people know that, like, you know, the effect of a criminal record and what it can cause to you, like, like, you know, because we're already racially profiled as you could, like, you know, every day that we, we live, whether your pants are sagging down, you're already in this, this category, this stigma, so it's like, it would be nice to have somebody to educate our community a little bit more on what, you know, we should, like, where you want to go, goals. Just to give you a little touch, my, when I started getting myself involved with criminal activity, I had a guidance counselor, actually, and I told my guidance counselor that I wanted to become a lawyer, and my guidance counselor at that point told me, oh, well, you're a little bit old and you're pregnant, maybe you should just do ECE. So at that point, it kind of derailed, kind of derailed me, and I was just like, oh, well, I don't have a goal now, I don't know where I'm going, I don't know what I'm going to do, and it was just more, being more lost, getting involved more in the law now because I was, I didn't have a goal, I didn't have anything that I was looking forward to. So having a support system in place, I think, for, for youths is very important. For adults, I, I think there should be some form of rehabilitation program that should be put in place. Like, I haven't been in trouble, my son is 11 years old, I haven't been in trouble in maybe 15 years, and I would love to be rehabilitated or considered to be rehabilitated, considered to be bondable, and I'm not at this point, it's a waiting game for me. It's just, you know, my future lies on this, my mother had passed away nearly 10 years ago, I am the sole provider for my family, and my sister just turned, I had to take care of my sister since she was 15, so my son was a month and a half and my daughter was 10, and I, I, when my mom passed away, it was more than just, you know, it's, it's time for you to step up to the plate, but it's very important for me to do this because they rely so much on me, and I need, I need, I need a break. I don't, I don't, I'm not the same person that I was, you know, five years ago, two years ago, 10 years ago, 15, 20 years ago, I'm a completely different person, and I wish that there was even something that was available so that you could go and speak maybe, show what you've done in the community to give back, that would be, that you would be considered to be rehabilitated, or, like, anything along the line that you can be considered to be, you know, a good, good citizen.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Charles, for your, for your testimony today. Now, the senators do have some questions, and so we'll start with Senator Atul Jan, followed by Senator Cordy.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Ms. Charles, for sharing your story with us, and I, you know, I think you've done very well, I mean, you know, 15 years. We, since we started this study, we are realizing things need to change, we need more help, you know, and support for young offenders especially, once they, once they leave prison. Last week, when we visited the women's prison, we heard horrible stories of racism, and including name-calling by some of the staff, stuff that I will not even repeat. Was that your experience too?
Oh, I, if you do stuff that, like, they don't like, or let's say you're mouthy or you stand up for yourself, that's considered, like, you're being defiant, so then you have this name or you have this stigma that you're defiant, and then all the other guards now have it out for you, and if they're not calling you names, like derogatory names, they are, it's, it's, like, they all will come in and, like, fight you, like, let's say in the washroom or in your, in your cell, mainly they come into your cell because you're, sometimes you're, put one person to the room, so they'll come in to your, to your room and literally, like, it's two, three of them, four of them, and fight you, and then you're being charged or you're being considered obstructing justice, and then you're being put to the, to the, to SAG, to the, to solitary, like, you have to be by yourself, and like, that's happened to me, I can, that's happened to me quite a few times, and it was where I was just trying to defend myself in terms of I had nothing to do with anything, and I was just trying to tell my side of the story, but I guess I was loud, or I came across as being loud or belligerent, and that's when this is, and then I was ended up in SAG.
So we also heard that a lot of, the experience was that if they complained, there were repercussions.
Oh, yeah.
So effectively, nobody wanted to complain.
Yes.
Was that the...
Well, if you can't complain, because if you complain, it just goes around in a circle. It's similar to, like, the police, right? If you have a complaint, you have to complain to the, to the, to the, basically, the sergeant, and then when you go there, they've opened up now an IOPRC or something where you can complain to the people that are above them, but it's still the police that handle your case. So how does that make me feel secure? Is there, is there anything that, if there was something, an independent body that was outside of the court that, or outside of the, the jail system that was handling it that didn't have anything to do with them, sure, you would probably hear tons of complaints, but you're afraid, because then, remember, they're responsible, they have, your life is in their hands. So you have to comply, you can't, you can't complain.
Was there any kind of support system there? Was there anyone who was, like, at this time when you sort of, you felt you were really alone, was there anyone that you could rely on, was there a group, was there, is there any kind of support available?
Nope, there's none at all, no support systems, no, like, counseling systems, even if you call the doctor, like, let's say you get injured and you call the doctor, or the nurse, or it's a nurse that's in there, and the nurse comes, they're also limited to what they could say, or, like, you know, like, if you get, if you end up getting beat up and you have to, they have to cover the wounds now of what they did to you, it's where you're, you're, you can't say anything because it's, it's very limited, it's very, very limited. Like, there's no support system, there's nobody to say, well, what happened, are you okay? Well, let, let even an outside body coming into the, into the prisons and seeing how the inmates are doing, that, that would be, just randomly show up. That, that's what needs to be done.
One final question. Have you, you said that when you met ethnocultural people come, you know, speak to you, you felt that there was support there, you could learn from them. Do you do any speaking engagements to go out into the community and, you know, speak to young people, just, just your experiences and how, you know, how you would have done things differently, how you would have not, like, you said you were foolish, you got involved in crime at the age of 13, 14. You know, they need to, they need to hear, the young people need to hear, do you do that, or if not, maybe it's something that you should do?
To be honest with you, it's something I've been thinking about doing, I've been thinking about it for a very long time, however, our resources, some of our resources that we have within our community is very limited. I had an issue, for instance, not to get into personal with my problems, but I had an incident, and I was looking out for people within my community to help me, and there was nobody, and the frustration, the anger that I had, it was unbelievable, and I, I wish that we would have a place that we could even have, you know, lawyers, counselors, you know, advocates in one spot that would be able to say, okay, well, this, this is what's happening within our community, whether it's in the jail system, whether it's even in CAS, if in the school systems, right, like, it's, it's, remember, we get targeted from a young age, our target comes from school, and then when it comes to school, you become into, into high school until you're adolescent, and then when you start wearing your pants sagging down and you fit into now a different bracket, right? And then if you get in trouble with the law now, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Senator Cordy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Charles, for telling your story, because it's when we hear the stories from individuals that we know that we have to make recommendations that will make a difference, so thank you very much, and it's nice to see you again, Ms. Brown-Ramsey, after last week, it's nice to have you back again. One of the things that we heard in last week was my first time ever being in a, in a women's prison or a man's prison the day before, and I have to say, when I was in solitary confinement area, I just felt such a sense of despair and, and lack of hope for anybody who would even be in there. Is that what happens when you go in as a prisoner? I mean, I was leaving that day. What happens when you get put in solitary?
It's like, well firstly, they take out your mattress, they take out, so you're, so even if you, you're confined to having to stay in that room, why would you take out the mattress when I have to lay down? So I'm laying, like, you'd have to lay down on a hard concrete surface, and then you have a little small window, and the room is very tiny, so you, if you don't pace up and down, it's like you're going crazy. So if they feel, if they feel like, if you're a troublemaker, let's say you're, you're making noise, you're not going to get a shower, you don't get a shower, but if you're quiet and you don't have anything much to say, you'll be able to get the shower, but it's literally like going crazy. It's like you're going crazy because you're locked up and you, you can't go anywhere, you can't, you're just, it's, it's literally like going crazy, and I had to spend two weeks in there. So, and I, I felt like, okay, like, I was going to go nuts.
Because the room wasn't very big.
It wasn't big, and then I never had a mattress, and then they just, like, you can't speak to anybody, and like, even when I wanted to try to speak to plead my case, to say that this is not what happened, I couldn't even get to speak to the, the person in charge. So they, so they shut you down, like, the guards won't even allow you to go above them, even when you're in there, so you're, you're, it doesn't, you have no hope. You, you, there's no humanity, there's no hope, it's nothing, it's like, you cannot.
And we heard stories similar to yours about racism within the system, and one of the things that we also heard, because we met with different groups, was that they often felt that one racial or ethnic group was being pitted against another racial or ethnic group. Is that your experience?
And that also goes with the area that you are, the area that you come with. As I said earlier on, when you, like, you get in now and, let's say you're from a certain part of Toronto and the other range is a certain part of Toronto, they know that, okay, well, I've had you before and you're just a troublemaker, so I'm going to put you on this range, and then that's how, and then you end up getting beat up from the people that are in, like, the other, in, in the other prisoners that are there because you're either not from the area or you've had a problem with them before, and they are all aware of this, and they just do it deliberately anyways.
I, I was struck by one of your comments that you need a break, and I'm sure there are others in your position where you just need a break, somebody has to give you the opportunity, like, the pardon would be an example of giving you the break. So what are we not doing to ensure, and what should we be doing to ensure that people who have been trouble-free for, in your case, 15 years, that, that, how, how long does it take before you can prove yourself, I guess?
Is that, are you, is that with the pardons, with the parole board?
With the parole board.
Because with the parole board, if it's a summary convictions, it's, I believe, because they just changed it, they recently just changed it, so now I, I believe it's like five years or something, and I think indictable offenses are like eight or 10 years, I believe, but that's the rehabilitation in order for you to apply. Now, another thing that's not mentioned in that is that if you get, like, let's say fees, or you have, like, victim surcharges, and you don't pay those fees, right, by the time you go to apply for your pardon, and you find out that you have to pay for the, you have fees, and you pay them, then that one year starts from the day that you paid the fees. So you could have been, have no contact with the law for 10 years and had victim surcharges and not be aware of it, or nobody explained these things to you, and then now you go to apply for your pardon, and now you have fees, and I'm saying this because that's what happened to me, and then they wanted to start it from one, the year from the day I paid the fees, and I went higher and above and I had to complain, and then that's when they accepted it, because I went, I wouldn't stop at where they told me, oh, we can't, I, I kept on pushing, I'm like, I was unaware of my fees, what can I do? And if, and if somebody isn't as strong as me, they get stopped and they're going to wait a year, right? I don't know what would be considered a reasonable time to consider somebody to be rehabilitated, but I know that if, if you're demonstrating yourself within the community and, you know, school and working and things like that, it, there should be something that should be put in place, even if it's a different category maybe, where you say, okay, yes, you've been in trouble with the law, but you are, you are considered, like, partial rehabilitated, you know, something where it at least gives the employers a sense of security to say, okay, well, yes, this person's been in trouble, however, this is what is, is going on now.
I think Senator Pate had a supplementary.
Checking, when you, it's actually five years after summary conviction you'd have to wait.
Yes.
And did you say they made an exception, they gave you a year after victim surcharges?
No, 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 no. What had happened was I had to pay fees, and then when you pay your fees, your one year starts from the day that you pay the fees, so the one year for you to apply for the application goes from the day that you pay the fees, but my years were already up, so when I was trying to apply for the, for my applic, my application now, they weren't accepting it because I had fees, but then my year would have started from then, when my year could have started from now.
When you say year, you mean the five years?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you. Senator Andrew Chuck, and then Senator Pate.
So many areas we could cover. I see your strength, and you said it would have been good if you had received some information earlier on, when you were starting out on a negative behavior, to know what the consequences of a criminal record would be. I've struggled with that. Parents have told me, if they're on negative, they don't listen to, this is going to affect you. I was involved with scared straight programs where we had lifers come in and talk to young kids to say, don't go the path I took because you're going to end up like me. It worked for a while and it didn't. You've put your life together and you're trying to straighten out. What kinds of programs would work in school? Because it seems counselors, some parents, some NGOs that work in correct, do tell people, young people when they're starting, oh, don't, but it doesn't resonate any more than when my mother said, don't.
I was just about to say that to you. When, me starting out, when my mom was telling me, Natalie, you can't do this, this is going to affect you, I was just like, oh, mom, like, please, just be quiet. Hearing stuff from your parents, it's like, oh, you could shove it under the rug. When you start hearing things from other people, you're, you're still caught up in the, in the life and that world that you're living in, that what other people are kind of saying to you doesn't matter, but you see if you had the proper, like, advocacy where it's like, not to put you on the spot, I'm so sorry, but honestly, like, I, I met, can I just tell you about Sophie and I? I met Sophie when, honestly, when I was incarcerated, and I was about maybe 15 years old, and I had been sentenced to an open custody. When I went into the open custody, I met Sophie, and at that point, as I told you, my sister was also, she was also very young, but the, the information and the support that I got from Sophie, at that point, I knew I did not want to get in trouble anymore. At that point, I knew, okay, you know what, there's greater things to me because she told me, she was pointing things out about me that I, I would have, I didn't know. Up to today, she's still... Up to today, she still does the same thing. I called her just the other day to say, I wanna, I wanna apply for this placement that's in the government. Should I apply? Like, what do I do? And it's support beyond support beyond support. And if there was more agencies or more support systems that were like her or or what she has to offer. I think that it would be a lot more effective, where it's not that. You're speaking about what you're doing wrong. That's the thing. People are speaking about, you're getting yourself in trouble. Um, this is what you gotta do, you're doing this wrong, but you're not speaking about how fabulous I am. You're not speaking about how great I can be. You're not speaking about the fact that I am. I'm this phenomenal person and I can be this person if I just choose to change my life. You're not telling me those things. You're telling me that I'm. I'm getting myself in trouble. You're telling me that you need to change and you're telling me that you need to do this, but I don't wanna do that because you're telling me that I need to. But if you tell me a little bit about myself and you tell me that, you know what? When when the, when the lady told me, the counselor said, you you can't be that, you can't be that lawyer. And Sophie says, say, well, yes, you can be that lawyer and you can be anything that you wanna be. I tell my son this every day. I play Les Brown for my son every day. My son is ten years old and I let him know you could probably even be the president of the United States. You can be anything you want. And this is what I tried to instill in his head from a young age because it wasn't instilled in mine. And my trouble came when my mother met my stepfather, where he wasn't a good fit for my mom. And that's where my problems came. The head clashing came. So when she was to speak to me now, it'd be like. Whatever. And then, as I said, when I met Sophie and she was telling me other things about, it was about me. It was about me, that was the difference. And I can make a difference to me. And that's what made me wanna change my life. And that's the type of community services or s- or or, uh, stuff that you guys, support systems you need is. That are more like this, where they genuinely care about. The, our community and individuals, where it's not just about money or it's not just a show, it's not just a face. It's it's. It's there.
Thank you. Uh, Senator Martin has a supplementary.
I just have one question for Ms. Charles because, um, I did come a little bit late, I apologize, so I missed your full testimony, but. I've been wondering, who is this, uh, person next to you, uh, you know, really, really, um. Encouraging you. So again, I I missed that, but your explanation, uh, clarifies that. But I was also. Wondering as you're speaking about, you know, being that advocate yourself and. You know, you're very well spoken and your honesty, your authenticity comes through so clearly. And whether, um, there might be an opportunity for you to be that person. Uh, in in whatever organization or nonprofit or advocacy work it may be, so, um. You mentioned that you've been thinking about it, but I just sort of see, you know, someone who presents so well. And the fact that you have the direct experience, I think your voice will will carry such weight and, as I said, it's. I I've learned a lot just from the time that you've spoken and and to just encourage you. So it's not so much a question, but more of an observation. An encouragement to you and to thank Sophie for the good work that she is doing as well.
Thank you. Senator Andrew Chuck, did you have another question?
Yes. I dealt with so many young people. Um, the influence was often a boyfriend or a close girlfriend. And the parents were struggling. And, um, as I say, there was less. Capability of penetrating the good part of you then. Is part of your success with your mentor here. Um, the fact that you'd already experienced a, um, incarceration, a custody. And had experienced that and that resonated with you. And then along came the right help to get you out of the system. Cause one of the things we're looking at is, um, those that are incarcerated, how do you bring them back into society in a positive way? So was your timing the right thing there? Is that? Would you have listened to her as you were starting out?
I actually, when I met Sophie, I was pretty much involved heavily, cause I was fifteen. And about fourteen, fifteen were like the real rough times of my life. Um, but you have to come to a point where you realize within yourself that you want more and you want and you want better. And if you can't analyze that for yourself and figure that out, that's where the problem li- lies. So it's not only just, I got the support, yes, but I had to realize that this wasn't the life for me. I didn't like people telling me to go to sleep. I didn't like people telling me what to do in terms of. You gotta go to bed, you can eat now, now it's time to go back to sleep. And not like, I I just, it it just, there was just. So much more to life than just that. My mom is a single mom. My mom actually worked, um, over twenty years in Revenue Canada. So my mom, I come from, even though she's a single mom, my mom was an a- an amazing. Woman that worked, uh, an amazing job and she studied. So I grew up seeing that. Now, you go from, to me, I grew up in a very good home because she provided a like, a like love and, you know, things to me that. A mother always does. However, um, it's just where you have to realize that, okay. I I couldn't take my behavior anymore and like my mom, like I used to see my mom in tears and my behavior was was hurting her. So. Again, you have to analyze that you either continue doing these things and you're hurting yourself and your loved ones, like my mom. And, um, you know, or change. And when you have somebody that tells you that, okay, you're not just a criminal. You're not just a person that gets in trouble like all the time and this is what your life is, that you could be more than this, you can be better than this, then it goes. You start looking at, I started looking at my mom, my mom studying every day and how tremendous she is. Every day suit and tie, like, you know, her, not sorry, suit and tie, her suits and her her little briefcase bag pulling and going to work. And I'm like, okay, am I gonna be like my mom? Right? Where I'm gonna be the successful black woman or am I gonna be like friends? Where you're going nowhere, you're heading down the wrong path. And that's a a a a point where I came. When I met you at the at the open custody and I was like, okay, this is, this is where I had the right road and I had the left road. So which road are you choosing to go down? And that's where I I had to do the balance of the scale.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Pete and then Senator Hartling.
Right, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you very much. And nice to see you again. Um, and, uh, I'm very pleased to welcome you here. And Ms. Charles, I just wanted to check, was it federal and provincial custody you were in?
Yes.
Okay, so it was a Grand Valley Institution?
Uh, well, what I, it was in Maplehurst, I was out in Maplehurst. First, I I was in Vanier, when it was Vanier first, then I was out in Maplehurst.
Okay, so not in Grand Valley.
Yeah, no.
So that would be proven, the provincial corrections?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so do, um. Does the Ombuds Office ever visit there? Cause in the provincial corrections, the Ombuds Office, um, of each province and territory is supposed to monitor what's happening in corrections. Did they?
I've never seen them.
No, okay.
Ever, never. I did, and this is actually my first time even hearing that there was an ombudsman of that. So had I known even like back then, I probably would have filed complaints.
Okay, so just, um, in terms of the issues we're looking at, we're predominantly looking at federal custody. And so in the federal system, for instance, there's a. Correctional investigator that goes in regularly, uh, for women, the prisons for women, there are regional advocacy teams that go in and women in prison who. Are hired to actually work as advocates. And but it sounds like there was none of that at that. To my knowledge, there's still none of that at Vanier and at, uh, in, um, either the Lindsay Jail or the Milton. Jail or Maplehurst, so.
Yeah, um, sorry, Maplehurst is the Milton.
Yes.
That's the Milton. Cause I know you're.
There was none of that.
No.
Okay, that's great. Um, what kinds of recommendations would would you make for, to try and prevent young people from being in the situation you were? I think you've said some of that. And then I wanna ask you a bit more about, um, the record process, if if that's okay.
That's fine. Um, things to do to prevent. Activities. I would say, um, they close a lot of community centers. They've, um, after school programs with with kids, um. Like extracurricular activities that are within the school programs even. Like, I remember going swimming. I remember learning a lot of different things growing up. And when I went to school in elementary and and they don't have that now. Um, I think if there was some kind of activities and and, um. Even if, like, when you get to a certain age and like a certain, like, even in high school, well, you wanna know what you wanna be. If there were certain things that were put in place to kind of. Steer you towards that. So if you wanna do nursing, there is courses or stuff that you would take that would help you to get to that. Destination versus, you know, like, I I think that the the counselors or something just needs to be involved where you can get into these children's head at a young age to say. What do you wanna do? What do you wanna be? What would you like? Um, like, what sports do you like? Cause the thing is, is that not everybody likes school. Maybe you could be a tradesperson. None of these things are even sp- are are even talked about. Okay, well, I know you don't like school. Well, have you thought about doing a trade? And if you don't do school now, you're considered the idiot. But it's like, so then you have school, school, school. Well, I don't like school. I don't wanna do school. So what's my next alternative? Well, then if you don't do school, you're a dropout. Right? There's 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 nothing there that says, well, you know what, if you don't do school, you can do, you can do, uh, training, you could do skilled working. Nothing there. And I think if these things are put in place, especially for kids that know that, okay. I don't like school, for black men especially, little black boys, I don't like school, so I can go do work with my hands. Cause I say the same thing to my son. I realize my son doesn't like to read. I'm like, okay, pops, you, you know, okay, look, I I try to show him other stuff like engineering and. Like, you know, even like he's into these video games and I say, you you could, you could build a video game, you know? You could be a video game designer. Right? Like, there's other things that you can do that may not just be that you have to be a doctor or a lawyer. So I think if that was put in place, um, where they know that they have options and there's also activities. Um, extracurricular activities, not just only basketball or soccer, there was like other stuff that, you know. That you don't know where your talent is. Right? You don't know what you're best at.
So things to encourage young people.
Yeah.
Um, Madam Chair, I'm at your disposal because my question is about pardon, so it's not really a supplementary or second. It's a, do you want me to wait for a second round?
Well, yes.
Okay.
And and so we'll go to Senator Hartling and then we have Senator Martin. I'm not sure if we'll get to a second round at this time. Because we have the second panel, but what we're going to do is invite the two of you to stay with us, just in case we have more technical problems. And then the, and if just time at the end, we'll do the second round at the end.
Okay.
Senator Hartling.
Thank you and welcome. And, um, Ms. Charles, you are a wonderful speaker. Very motivational to hear you speak and lots of good energy. And I see Sophie in you. So you're going to be, I'm sure, going to be a great mentor for people. And, um, I just wanted to ask you, I just trying to follow the story you're, which which you went through is, were you a parent when you were incarcerated or not?
Um, the, well, when I was a young offender.
Yes.
I was, I was incarcerated as a young offender.
Yes.
Um, when I got to, I was, I was incarcerated when my daughter was born, yes, cause I was eighteen, yes, yes.
Tell me about that. How did you, um, keep the relationship going? How was that?
That's where it was like, it was a little. It it was, it was rough because I didn't spend a lot of time in there, which is thank the Lord for that. Um, because the gap of the time that I had gotten trouble was a bit spaced out. So as I said, when I met Sophie, I stopped getting into trouble like for a a while and then I got back into trouble again. So when they looked at the time that I didn't get in trouble, I wasn't incarcerated for so long. So they gave me weekends. So I was, I was, did like my ninety days on the weekends and that alone was like, okay, I'm not gonna see her now. Like, I wouldn't see her Friday evening and then I had to come back like Monday morning. And like my weekends that was supposed to be like designated for her are now taken away because I have to go to, uh, Milton.
So that must have been challenging. And for other mothers, I'm sure there's more women that are parents that are there. So what, how do you cope with that?
You have to, this is where you become religious. You become religious. As I said, there's good and there's bad, when I said it earlier on. And this is one of the positives. So you become religious, you start praying, you start seeking, um, the Lord and you start asking for more strength. And guidance. And if I didn't do that, then. I don't know, because that's the only thing that I can, I can honestly think of that gave me the strength to be able to cope with that. Because it was the hardest thing. I had to leave, depart from her and know that I'm going in here and I'm locked up now. And then, you know, I wouldn't even call for the weekend, cause you gotta do collect calls and then your time is is is, uh, like you have like a fifteen, twenty minute or something. And then it cuts off on you. And then I don't want her to hear that, so. It was, it was, it was brutal. That one was brutal.
And and I know that, uh, we've learned in being in, visiting some of the, uh, institutions that you can't even have computer access where nowadays, when we're away from our family. We can do FaceTime and all those things, but you couldn't have that at all or anything to, uh, keep those connections. So I'm sure that was difficult, but now you're. Now you're with them and she, how old is your daughter now?
She's twenty one.
Oh, my gosh, wow.
She's twenty one. I have a twenty one year old and I have a ten year old. He'll be eleven soon.
Well, thank you again. I really appreciate.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you.
I actually, I actually have a supplemental following Senator Hartling's question. You said, this is when you become religious and the whole focus on spirituality. In some instances, we've heard of religious groups, uh, that will go into prisons to provide that connection. Uh, for prisoners. Did you have any of that experience?
I did.
Along the way?
I did.
Can you tell us about that?
Um, I, cause they come in and they speak and then you can do like, like, it's like Bible studies kind of and you can, like, they have a chapel and stuff that you can go to and you can pray. And, um, I did actually, I, uh, when I was in, before Vanier be. Uh, became in, like, went to Milton, they had their little spot in Brampton. And, um, I was in that one in Brampton and that's when I would just try, that's when I was in the solitary confinement. For so long. And, um, that's when you just, you try, you're you're just, you're trying, like. I I just, I prayed, I, every day I just, I prayed because I just, as I said, you're, you you're in this little room. You're locked up in the room and then you start like, it, just to not make you go crazy, you know, like. You just start to talk to yourself, you start to. I I don't know, you just, I I started going to the church that was there, like the, cause they would do the church and stuff and. I found that was a bit more helpful because, again, when you hear the word of God, it gives you that power to go on for the week. Until you can hear it again. And then you get the other set of power again. So it would give me my strength for the week. So that's where I found that I had to go to this church that I would get my strength from from there.
Senator Martin.
My my questions are related and I was going to say, I feel that that way myself or, you know, on a weekly basis, uh, just to kind of. Uh, get the reassurance from, you know, the higher place. Um, my question was, was, uh, when you were talking about your son and what you say to him, the positive messaging. And it sounds like you have these positive relationships, but I was curious about the impact on the children. Uh, maybe long term and, you know, unfortunately, we see how sometimes the the cycle repeats itself. It's just, it's very difficult. So. Um, you mentioned that, you know, if there were more programs in the communities, in the schools. That really would support the the children, not just, uh, um, like for all children, but specifically. You know, for children whose, you know, parent has been, um, has has a record and who may have been separated from them. So I was just, I was just wondering what kind of, uh, support, say, your children or or children that you're aware of. Uh, may have while you're in, uh, prison, uh, are there community organizations? And is there any counseling for, um, you know, specific, like focusing on, uh, children of of former inmates? Um, because I think that is a very specialized area. Yes.
That's extremely important. Um, and to my knowledge, there is none. Um, and I think that a child should be, um, I I'll just give you a little story. Uh, I have a, my sister's friend, her mother was, uh, importing drugs to the States and got. Arrested in the United States. Now, when she was arrested, she, everything was here in Canada. So her house and then she has about, I think, four or five kids. Now, there was nothing put in place for these children, nothing that was even there to say, okay, well, your mom even left this amount of money or. And we're, you you guys need to pay this, these bills. So, um, make a long story short, she was sentenced to five years and give or take, came back to Canada and lost everything. Her house, because the kids were young and didn't know how to manage it, the, they, she, everything she lost. And it's not that, but the one child in particular is so mentally distraught. That no matter how much I try to speak to her and and I try to reassure her myself too. Come on, Shan- like, Chantel, you can do anything that you want. You can, you can, uh, go back to school, um, you know. Get your education, do what you gotta do. But because of that separation and she was the youngest, I think she was maybe fifteen. And she was the youngest and she, that affected her. And she's twenty five years old now and she still can't get herself together. And she's twenty-five years old now and she still can't get herself together. So if there was something in place where you, there was support or maybe even like, uh, caregivers, um, because if you leave it up to the kids to go there to see them, the, the child won't do that. Right? So you need like a caregiver maybe that can come into the home, right? That can foresee what's going on like with the child or even say, okay, I'm gonna, I, I'll be able to delegate this, pay these certain bills to make sure the child even has a roof over their head or food in the fridge, things like that. Um, maybe even programs where, you know, you can bring the child to see the parent. A- a- and maybe it not that be where the parent's behind bars, where it could be a touch visit. Right? It, it doesn't have to be where you're just, you're, you're, the glass and, cause that's, that's a huge effect. That's a huge effect. And, you know, I, I just pray to God my son doesn't repeat my cycle. Pray to God, please.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one quick question. And that's just a point of trying to clarify something. In your testimony, Ms. Charles, you talked earlier about a program when you were a young offender, you, there was a program that was specifically for African Canadians. Was that a program run by the African Canadian Legal Clinic?
Um, I do, I, to be quite honest, I was, I was young. So I don't know what program. I believe that it was out of, um, it's like a Lawrence West Community Center. There's a community center that used to be inside of Flemington Park. And there was a lady named Janet. And that was, I, I, I can't remember her name, cause if I can find her too, she was another Sophie. If I could find her, like, like, but to, cause I found, I had to, you know, I had to dig for Sophie? I had to dig for Sophie because I was locating her, trying to find her for years. Like, I needed Sophie because there's so many things I was going through and it's like, where is this lady? And finally I found her. So now I'm, I'm like, you know, it's just perfect.
Well, we're great, we're very grateful. We'll, we'll take a short break here. Uh, we, there's a restroom. We'll take a short break, three minutes, three-minute break, and then we'll come back. That'll allow us to transition. Uh, Ms. Half Kenny, I'm aware that you're still there, but I think when we transition to the other, uh, we will lose you, but we will be in touch so that we get your evidence as well. Thank you.
And Odd Max, how did they actually create the turning point? How did you s- tell yourself, I've gotta do something, I've gotta change? How did that all come about?
Okay, well, well, what Walls to Bridges does, gives us the opportunity to further our education. Like I said, they were, they are for credit. So you get the credit for it, the university credit. But it was the pedagogy, circle pedagogy, and it's very interactive. Um, it's not traditional, whereas you have the desks. Cause I grew up in a traditional classroom setting. And I can tell you, back in the seventies, when I had my experience in the public school system, they would put girls that looked, people that looked like me, usually in the back of the class. Even if you were bright, you sat at the back of the class or, or even if you had your hand up, the teacher didn't give a crap. She would usually, or he would usually, you know, answer somebody else's question or their query. So a lot of, so this circle pedagogy, I find, and it's more, it, uh, we mold it off of the indigenous, um, way of life, way of teaching, way of learning. Um, it's, it's reteaching, it's relearning where you're not only learning, but you're also teaching too. There's no hierarchy. Everybody is just one and everyone has a chance for their voice to be heard. So that was Walls to Bridges. And I can go more into detail with it after. Now I wanna go into Odd Max. Ms. Maxine Telfer came into the institution, um, basically, I wouldn't say just for the, um, woman that looked like me, the, the, the minority woman, but it was open to everyone. But more, uh, we were more targeted because our needs are different. And so she came in and, uh, through her ethnocultural program and found out that our queries, our wants, our needs were not being met. Was being, I don't know if I could say ignored, but we had, for instance, our hair was falling out because we had no proper hair care. Um, in, 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 in programming, sometimes, you know, sometimes when we would suck our teeth or just say, they would see it as disrespectful. If we called certain women miss, because that's how we grew up. If we called certain facilitators or certain officers miss, other ones would see it as a diss. But it wasn't a diss and sometimes some people, they were more humanistic to us. So we gave them extra respect. We would not be disrespectful, but some people saw it as disrespectful because if we don't want to share something with them because our experiences are totally different, our world is different and they didn't want to hear about our world. We had, we had no supports, in other words. The parole officers, ninety-nine percent, they, they, they're, they're white. The facilitators is the same thing. The officers is the same thing. So if we have a problem, sometimes it's hard for you to go to someone with a problem who can't understand that problem because they're going to give you some sort of explanation that they took from out of a book. Some sort of a remedy that's not going to work for you. And we learnt that, so we were, we became our own sisters. We became a community, but we were a community within. Odd Max provided a community without.
Uh, we did hear, uh, last week when we were in Kitchener, we did hear about the, the proper hair products and the lack of understanding about how important this was to, to the, the prisoners who were there. So, um, thank you for bringing that up again. How did you, um, you know, you talked about racism within the, uh, prison system and you also spoke about the, the lack of, um, people that you could seek help from who were, uh, uh, black. They were mainly white. So what within you got you to say, I want out of here, I want to do better, I want an education? Was it somebody who helped you? Was it a mentor along the way? Or was it just a personal drug?
And I'd like, sorry, sorry to cut you off. I'm sorry.
No.
It was many people and mind you, I have to let you know also, a lot of them were white. A lot of the most beautiful, understanding people that I've met along this journey are white people. But the majority of them were not. And I have a saying, it's not, it's, it's not, it's, it's not unique to me, but I just take it a little bit further. You walk a mile in my shoe, okay, fine. How's about living a year in my skin? The world would look at you differently and you would look at the world differently. And that's what they don't understand. And I don't like when people play the race card. I really don't because sometimes I think it can be used when it's not warranted. But there are times when it's justified and it's easy for someone to say, that's the race card, I don't want to hear it, blah, blah, blah. When sometimes some people, they just don't want to deal with what they know is true, but they don't want to deal with it and it's the easiest thing for them to say, just shut up and they will shut us up because of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Senator Pate.
Yes, um, thank you very much for your, your work and, um, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, um, Ms. Edwards for your work and also for congratulations on all of your successes. The, um, the success of so many of you, um, who have come through the Walls to Bridges program, I think is a testament to the value of that program. And the fact that it's the only, um, the Grand Valley's institution is the only, um, institution, the only prison for women and for men, for that matter, that has that program in it. And it's, um, one of the things where, um, I would like to ask you is what, would you recommend, I think I know the answer, but would you recommend an expansion of the Walls to Bridges programs throughout the country so that other women and men who are in federal penitentiaries would have access to the same sort of university education? Um, and just as a backdrop, um, Madam Chair, it's, it hasn't been since nineteen ninety-two that university education was provided in the federal prison system. It was cut out at that time. And so usually people, as we heard at Grand Valley and at Joliet and at other prisons, they have to pay for their own courses. And this initiative, um, commenced by Dr. Shoshana Pollack was one of the first in the, is still the, the only one in the country. And I think Ms. Edwards' success is an, an incredible testament to that program as well as her own personal, um, skills and qualities. And I can hardly wait to see where you're gonna go in the, in the next few years, Ms. Edwards.
Before you answer, Ms. Edwards, I have a supplemental to that question from Senator Pate. And that is, are the credits from what you've done at Walls to Bridges, are they accepted by the University of Toronto in the program you're doing now? So if you could talk about that bridging too, please. Thank you.
Um, first to the credits, no. The University of Toronto, they have their own, they have their own standard. So I had to take the bridging program because of, uh, my mother's, uh, my mother's elderly and we do live downtown Toronto and I wanted to be closer to home. So if I wanted to utilize those credits from Wilford Laurier, I would have to have done it pretty much at Wilford Laurier. I probably could have done it at Ryerson. But I threw, um, Dr. Simone Davis. She said, you know what? Why don't you take the bridging program and, and just, and segue into U of T? And that's what I did. Um, I would recommend it to anyone and I do know that there's a lot of, sometimes I tell people, because I'm very vocal about where I am, because I want to talk, I would like to tell my story rather than somebody tell my story for me. So I let them know where I was, where I am and where I want to go. Things can change, but I know what I don't want. When I told a cer- certain, some people, they say, well, I find it horrible that prisoners can get educated. But when they, they don't, what they don't understand is the chances of recidivism are not, are so low that sometimes it's like you can say it's almost like none. Because it builds your self-esteem. It gives you a direction and, and sometimes, I'm not gonna say it's not morals that we didn't have, but sometimes the odds were so stacked up against us that we choose to do the things that are unlawful. Now I have, I just had a, an appointment with my parole officer. I see her once per month. I just had an appointment with her. I took the certificate to show her, which I do have it in my bag. You know, I was quite happy. You know, I got this award, blah, blah, blah. She showed no emotion. You know what the woman said to me? She hinted to me, you know, you seem to be a very caring person. Have you ever considered P S W? So when I let her know, because she has a problem with a lot of people coming into this country, she says, getting on welfare and getting O D S B, which I am on, O D S B. I said to her, a lot of these foreigners that are coming in, they're more educated than you are. It's just a different culture and they're coming from, sometimes they're coming from very traumatic experiences. So they were vetted before they even came here. The government- The government is not just going to give them ODSP just because they, just because they want to give the money away. So there's that prejudice also.
Just want to clarify what ODSP is for people who may not know. ODSP, please, just say what that means.
Ontario Disability, Ontario Disability, I think it's a support program or supplemental program.
Thank you.
I went into GBI pretty much healthy. I came out with Graves' disease. Graves' disease. I was going to the doctor many times, and they sent me up. Finally, I came out with, well, you come out, you come out usually with no IDs. So think about getting IDs with no IDs. It's the hardest thing, but we manage, because you're coming in there, you're coming out of there with a sense of, with a sense of strength, because you have to, you have to do it. You have to just take everything that you have now, because you're fighting for yourself now. So I kept going back to the clinic, and then they finally sent me to a specialist at Sunnybrook. I went, and the doctor looked after, I saw him twice. He was very professional, he never really made eye contact with me. He would just tell me my blood level counts, my blood work, blah, blah, blah. He looked at me one day, he put his pen down. He said, "Why did you let it get to this point?" I said, "Doctor, what are you talking about?" He said, "Why would you suffer yourself? You have Graves' disease. This is, this is a progression, you just don't get Graves' disease overnight." I said, "What is that?" Well, I had an extreme form of thyroidism that it happened at GBI. I would tell them, "I am not well, I don't feel myself." And they would think it's all psychological, it's because you're here. I'm like, "No, I feel it in my body. My mother survives on four hours of sleep. My father survives on four hours of sleep. I've grown up with my mother working three jobs. My father is a professional musician, educated at McGill, Berkeley, my father, you know what I'm saying? And I'm telling you, I know my family. We, 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 we're, 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 we're hyperactive. So for me to be feeling this way isn't right." And they would brush me off. And then they started making me think that there was nothing wrong with me. So when I went, the doctors, the doctor suggested a special program. I went to the program, I completed the program, and they, they found me fit for ODSP. That's how I got ODSP. So for the parole officer to question the integrity of a medical professional, I burst into tears, and she told me, "That's all on you." I said to her, I said, "Please, Ms., have a heart. This is degrading for me. I'm fifty-two years old, and I got two wealth, welfare checks in my life, and that's because I transit, I transitioned from the halfway house to my mother's home. The first check I got a hundred and eighty dollars. The second check I got two hundred, like twenty dollars. I bought a Metro pass and some food. I wanted off of that thing. I didn't expect to even be on ODSP. But I realized that I was ill." So for someone in, again, in the prison, in the penal system, to, to, to not listen to me and just blow off what I had to say, I found that highly disrespectful. And me knowing that I'm at the bottom of the rung, I just chose not to argue with this woman, because there would, I wouldn't be, it's a never-ending story, and I couldn't win her. As a matter of fact, I'm still on paperwork. And just like the GBI, your paperwork follows you. So I don't, I'm so mindful of the things that I have to say to this woman, have to be very careful. She questioned Walls to Bridges today, earlier this morning when I went in there to tell her. I didn't even tell her about this meeting, because that would have opened up a can of worms. She's supposed to be under my support. I'm supposed to be able to have a rapport with this woman, yet I don't feel comfortable doing it.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Hartling.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, and congratulations. Despite all the things that you're going through, you're pushing ahead. But the whole question of racism, it sounds like that's a big, big problem. And in the case of the worker that you're talking about, was it a question of racism, do you think, or is it a question of the way people are treated inside the, inside the prisons?
Both.
Both. So what can we...
I think they all need courses.
They need what?
They all need programs.
Programs? Okay.
I think they need programs, they need to be reeducated, they need to be relearned.
And what would be some of the things, if you were the teacher, what would you, what would you teach them?
I would teach them, since Canada is supposed to be multicultural and inclusive, that they need to understand, especially some of the older heads. They're not understanding what Canada is supposed to be. They're not getting it. Now, black and indigenous populations, I know we're minorities in the whole scope of the population, yet we're terribly overrepresented in the prison system. And there are reasons for that. We don't get up and want to commit crime, and most of our, most, now I can, I'm not speaking for the indigenous community right now, I'm speaking for the black community. There are, there are, there are problems, there, they are. My mother is just a personal example. My mother, barely a high school education. My mother can always get a job, always, but look at the type of job she would get. My father, yeah, sure, he had more than that, but he was always the last to be hired and the first to be fired. He, he up and quit, and that, that broke my family up. My father just left the country, because he said, "You can't get a break." I'm the only one in my family with a criminal history. You think I could go and give my mother anything that I stole from the street? Or, 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 or have a dollar that she couldn't, that I couldn't account for in her house? Or have any type of drug or any? She pulled me out. They don't stand for it. Yet, at the same time, I wanted what my other peers wanted, had. My best girlfriends were Yuna Hermatzu, Rosa Novakowski, Carolyn Greskoviac. We all went the same day to get jobs. We were in high school, we all went. They all got a job. I did not. Rosa would go in late, Yuna would not even show up, and yet, they can, their job was still secured. I wouldn't even get a chance in the door. I'm not saying this happens all the time to everyone, but this is what a large portion of us goes through.
So it's not just within the penal system, you're talking about in society in general? Doesn't sound like we've moved very far. And we're celebrating Black History Month, and we need to think about how we can move things forward in, in two thousand eighteen?
Can I even say, even programs on, on the show, Kim's Corner, yes, I like that, okay? It's a beautiful show and everything else. But if you look at the larger context of how influential my community is in the large scope, yet we don't even have, we don't even, the girl that wrote the show, The Kink in My Hair, she took, I spoke with her on the telephone once. She took off, she went across the border. She says it's too hard. The film board, they don't want to hear our stories. We have some stories. There are so many unsung heroes in the grave right here, people that has contributed all their lives, and they don't even get a pat on their shoulder. If they live to be eighty years old, they might get a letter from Kathleen Wint or Trudeau saying, "Congratulations on this milestone," but that's about it. They're not recognized. We don't have any, so for these little young boys, sometimes they don't have a role model. So you can see where they, where they're going to go wrong. And their fathers were beaten up on too. So it's like, they take off, and their mothers have it hard. You're being a mother and a father to a lot of these people. The young girls sometimes want to ask them, "Why are you getting pregnant? Why you do, why did you do that?" "I want something to love, and I want something to love me back." Because society here doesn't love you. I'm fifty-two years old, I don't, I don't even remember when I came here. I have no recollection of Trinidad. When I came here, my brother and I were on the same passport. We didn't even, I don't even know anything about where I came from. I went back to visit. I have family there, and they did not consider me family, they considered me a stranger. So when I came back into the land that groomed me, the...
Oh, no.
Oh, no. They, they will try to reconnect. In the meantime, we'll move forward with the second round with Ms. Charles. So Senator Cordy and Senator Pate. So you're back on, Ms. Charles, for now.
Thank you. And you were just sitting back enjoying this, weren't you?
She's very animated.
I know. You talked about needing a break. When you come out and you are rehabilitated and you want to move on with your life, and it's been fifteen years, and you've had no problems with the law, but you've got a family, you're getting educated, you want to get a career. So what can we recommend as a committee to give you and people like you a break? People who really want to better themselves?
That's actually a question I would have for you. That's actually the question for you, because it would be where, what, what could you guys offer to somebody like me? Right? Because I, I don't know what, I, I, I understand the powers that, 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 that some people have, and, but the thing is, is that, how far are they willing to use? Or how far are you willing to go to extend those, those, those powers? Because, again, there's a lot of people that are willing to help, but then you get stopped at a certain point of helping. So for me, it's like, what are you able to do for, for, for us, or for, even for me? Like what? Like what? That's, that's the question that I would have for you, to be honest.
So how could we have a Sophie in every committee, in, in every community?
That would, it's to really, to meet more people that are like her, to get maybe, to maybe support her organization, so that she can expand, so that it would be like a franchise type of a thing. Do you know what I mean? Where she can expand and put people that she genuinely knows is, are there for the community, are there for people. So when, if she has people that she recommends, pray to God that they are as genuine as she is and able to help. Right? To, that's the only thing I could think of, really.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Pate.
You talked about the pardon process, and I, I want to, if you're comfortable, if, if you could talk a bit about what the actual expense of that ended up being? Because many people don't realize now that, one, we don't actually have pardons anymore, it's record suspension.
Record suspensions.
And that the wait time is, has doubled from what it used to be when it was a pardon process, and the cost has quintupled. And, and so certainly one of the things that a number of us think, you know, I'll just, myself, that I think we should be putting in place like other countries have, is a process whereby, once a certain amount of time is expired, if the person's name pops up and they have not come to the attention of police, they haven't come on CPIC or anything, that they should be able to say they no longer have a criminal record. So a lot of people think it's just the six hundred, just, sorry, six hundred and thirty-one dollars is more dispos, more than most people's annual disposable income who have records. But many people have to, you then have to apply for fingerprints and all of that. So in the end, do you know how much it costs you in terms of financial and then also time to do your application?
Okay. Firstly, it changed within the last, I would say, maybe two or three years, I believe it changed. It was about a hundred and fifty dollars a few years back, and there was no time limit on when they can get back to you. So that's where you, you can apply, and you're waiting five, six years to hear something back, because they've been backed up with the order from, or backed up with records from how many years prior, records prior. Now, I think it's, as you said, six thirty-one. That's just to apply. Now, the fingerprints that are involved, there's, there's numerous things that are involved. You have to do your fingerprints first, and your fingerprints are to be done at your police station, but they get sent off to the RCMP. That's a fee. You have to get a record check, which there's two record checks that they want. It's a local police record check, but then there's also a record check that's specified for the record suspension. That's another like eighty bucks for just for the, just for the record suspen, just for the getting the record suspension, the application for, your criminal record for that. After you do that, the, the, I think this is the part that was a little more intense, was you have to know every place that you got in trouble. So every region that you got in trouble, you have to go to that region and apply for the transcripts. So if you got in trouble in Bram, like Peel Region or Toronto, Halton Region, you have to go to all of those regions, apply for transcripts, where you have to put a fifty-dollar deposit down, and it could either be more or less, and you have to pay for those transcripts. And then that, those transcripts take how much months to get back to you? So you're waiting for you to start your process. I, I would say it even started a year in advance, to six months in advance, prior to even being eligible of, of the, for your date, because the time that it takes, a month and a half or so, for the fingerprints and the mugshots to get back from the RCMP, and then another couple months for them to even get your transcripts. And, and yeah, you're just running around. And they have this thing called Pardons Canada, but believe it or not, they're just, it's just a, it's just a body, like they're just a face, if you know what I mean? Like, you still have to do all the work on your own. So you're just paying them just for their name, if you know what I mean? It's like their name, it's not, you're not really getting any form of help from Pardons Canada. You have to do all the legwork on your own.
So I have a supplementary to that.
Sure, so do I.
Oh, okay, you go ahead.
So Pardons Canada is an organization that's been set up that a lot of people think is actually the pardon people.
Exactly.
And people end up paying them as well, and can pay over a thousand dollars.
And they're also misleading. So they're very misleading. So not only does the name mislead you, because it's Pardons Canada, as it was called before pardons, so you're assuming it's a part of, of that. If you Google anything to do with pardons, they are the first people to come up. Secondly, they're maybe, they're over five hundred and something dollars just for them to do the application, for them to help you with the application, and then they make it look like, "We can get it done faster for you." But you can't. So I actually was calling about my fingerprints at the RCMP, trying to inquire what was taking so long. They had my fingerprints for three months. And at that point, I was like, "Well, can, can I speak to the manager, please? Because I would like to know, I put my stuff in for three months ago, and nothing's back yet." And at that point, I was going to do the Pardons Canada, and they said, the lady there said to me, "No, you know what? It's better if you do it on your own, you'll save yourself this amount of money." And I, I did mine on my own. So like even with my career, like I, that's a side little job that I would do to help people with their pardon.
And related to, in terms of the importance of a pardon, I don't know if it applied to you, and if it's too personal, I don't want you to feel you have to discuss. But for many mums, they cannot volunteer with their kids' teams, their schools.
You cannot.
If they don't have the process. And so they're banned for basically five or ten years from doing anything to do with their children, they can't go on school trips. And so that's something a lot of people don't realize. And the other is sometimes for certain employment, for instance, social work, and many of the professions, any kind of assist, assisting people. So the personal support worker, for instance, you can't even enroll in the program if you don't already have a pardon or a record sus, and actually, most of the schools haven't even caught up with record suspension, they require a pardon, so even with a record suspension, you cannot apply. Is that, have you had any experience with any of those situations?
Yes. Okay, going back to the school trips, as I said, my daughter's twenty-one. I haven't went on one trip with the actual school. Every trip that I go on, that I do, any volunteer, is I drive myself. So you're allowed to attend the trip, but you have to drive yourself. If you want to attend with the students, like with your child on the bus, you have to provide a voluntary, like your, your criminal record check, you have to do it voluntarily, you just say, "I don't have a record." That's how I was able to go on trips with my daughter. My son now is, okay, my daughter also got into rugby, and my son does track and field. And my son's extremely, my daughter, when she, with her rugby, she only traveled within Ontario, so I was able to go with her. My son was getting, going out now to the United States. I, my son was, I think, seven, and he was, he's extremely fast, and I not one, I haven't been able to send him. I don't send him, and then I have, because I can't go across the border because of my record, I'm inadmissible. So it's been, that has been extremely, extremely hard with that. In terms of employment, that's a nightmare. That's a nightmare all in its own, because every employment application asks if you're bondable. Every employment application asks if you've been convicted of a criminal offense. Now, are you going to lie? To be honest with you, I have. And that's half the jobs that I get, because if I don't lie on the application, I'm not going to get the job. So I, I, I lie. So I get into these, into these employment, they don't do a police record check, thank God. But the jobs now that I want now, in detail record check. So I'm now, I'm stagnant. I came to a halt now. I came to a halt now and I'm trying to, I'm back at the road, left or right. Which way do I go? Because I'm I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna allow my record anymore to to um to stop me, to hamper me, to 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 say, to um to define who I am. It's not me. And I'm not that person anymore. So I'm going to apply for these jobs and I'm going to be truthful. And I'm going to let them know that I have a record. However, I consider myself bondable. Now, with what you were saying in terms of a, in other countries, when they have programs that if you haven't been in trouble with the law or CPIC and you haven't been in trouble, you should be deemed rehabilitated. I absolutely agree with you on that, a hundred and ten percent. Because now, let's suppose, as she's on ODSP, how can she afford, besides taking money out of a few checks, let's say, to pay the six hundred and thirty-one dollars? Now, you get this six hundred and thirty-one dollars, but prior to that, you have all these other things that you need to pay before paying that six thirty-one.
Well, and in in many um provinces and territories, that may be more than you get for for even your rent. Um which reminds me, the other, have you ever been asked for a criminal record check to rent an apartment? I just went with my son last year to rent an apartment and he was asked about criminal record check. And I ended up questioning how they could ask that.
Um you're actually allowed to ask it. You are allowed to ask for any of those things. Um but I've never been asked for that.
In Ontario?
In a, yeah, I've never been asked uh for that, to be quite honest. I I I don't rent. I um I own. So I haven't had to face that, thank God. But um it's, in in the employment aspect, I've been faced with that challenge. Going on trips with my kids, I've been faced with that challenge. Being um being embarrassed to even tell people, like I I I've been battling with myself, getting lack of sleep the last few weeks as, because of my placement. And just saying, should I come out and tell my um placement advisor of what's going on? And again, back to what she was saying about support and about feeling comfortable and about feeling like if I tell her this, is she gonna look at me like this? Or is she gonna, is she gonna get me those jobs or like a- apply, help me to apply for them? I'm stuck. I'm I'm literally stuck. And I don't know what to do, to be honest with you. I'm I'm finished in April. I have placement in May. I don't hear back from Pardons Canada until, I hear me Pardons Canada to the, from the parole board until, they have until August, the latest. And all I'm doing, again, is I turn religious. And I'm praying to God, something pulls through for me to get a a placement and my pardon to be accepted and for me to be rehabilitated back into this society.
Thank you very much.
You've spoken it into the universe. And you are sitting beside the most incredible mentor and support person you could ever have.
Definitely.
So so that's our list for questions. Ms. Edwards, we're we're pleased that they were able to get you back. Are there any final comments you'd want to make to us? And I think you may have been in the middle of talking when the system went down.
Um there are just so many um things that I'd like to say. But I would like to um piggyback off of um what Natalie said about the the jobs. So I registered a company. I s- I swear to God, I would not come here and clean for people. But I did. So I registered a cleaning company and I got a couple, I got a couple of jobs. Um and I decided to be totally honest with them. As soon as I met them, I said, listen, um I don't know if you're gonna keep me on, but this is what, this is, I was charged with so and so and so. I was charged with importing. Now, I don't care what you have in your house. I don't wa- I don't care what, I don't want what you have in your house. Your jewelry, your credit cards, your, that's not my thing. And the the importing was my thing. It is no longer my thing. So I'm doing this cleaning job. And the guy says, okay, um can you come eleven till two? Happily, I did that. Now, what I knew to do was, if it, I said to myself, if I go after after four sessions, then that that means I'm a regular and I will start paying my taxes and I, you know, because he said he's paying me cash. I said, you know what? First couple of times, cash, no problem. But I want to pay my taxes and just see if I can build up on this. So that maybe when some of these women come out, when they're finished, then they can help and we can build this thing up because it's hard for us to get jobs. So I'm doing it. And then I found that he was shortchanging me. So I went back again and again, and he wouldn't give me the proper amount of money. So I said to him, I said, you know what? I just, I just got bold, in a nice way. I said, you know what, you you, maybe you misunderstood me, the, I was, you know, we made an agreement for such and such a payment. You know what he said? Well, you know what, I'll give you your payment after you work today. I worked like three times the amount, I'd worked like eleven till like six that evening. And when I was leaving, he said, I have nothing to give to you. And I said, why are you doing this? He said, you want me to call your parole officer? I said, you want me to call Revenue Canada? So he thought he had something on me, but I could have just flipped it back on him too. But that's the position that we are in sometimes. You're honest and look at what happens. It's like you can't get a break. I was totally honest with him. He never let, he never, he had cameras all over the place. He would, he would turn them on when I got there and leave me alone. Let me do my thing. But at the end of the day, he had that in the back of his head. Now, he can use this federal inmate, I can use this parolee because I have her, I I have her by the short and curly. So I just wanted to just add to what um Natalie said. It is, you're caught in between a rock and a hard place. I even had the parole officer say, well, you don't have to necessarily tell them that, you know, you are, you are um, you're on, you have a criminal record. I said, so i- are you saying that I must lie? But apart from that, the government offers programs to like seventeen, eighteen-year-olds to twenty-nine-year-olds. That's it. That's who they cater for. If you're beyond that, you're in trouble, especially if you're beyond that. And maybe a a a woman that looks like me, we suffer ageism, sexism, and all the other isms and schisms that come along with that. That again, is gonna break down your self-esteem. I know I speak a little bit loud, that's just me. And that was another thing I have to mention back at GVI. Women of color, our tone is usually, you know, it's not-
It's not the, it's not the Becky type of voices we don't have.
And sometimes we also use, we're animated, so we use our hands. And in programs, in programs, they saw that as being disrespectful. It's not disrespectful. I can tell by some, if 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 I use a telephone, if I call Ottawa, for example, or or a call center, the tone of the person that picks up the telephone, I can tell what type of person, not not in personality, I can tell the the features of a person that, you know, it's a black woman because of basically-
She doesn't really have the voice like this.
So because of that, we had knocked over all over the place. I'm telling you, walk, live a year in our skin and you will see, I'm, I I I mean, don't mean to be disrespectful, but um I don't remember, I I don't remember the senator, the 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 African Caribbean, I don't know, the 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 the, okay, the black lady right there that's speaking on the panel there, the senator. I am pretty sure, forgive me if I'm wrong, but you had to be double smart, double tenacious, extremely durable to get to where you are. Not no, there's no ordinary woman that look like you that's gonna be where you are, miss. And I give you, I, everybody on the board there, everybody on the panel, all the senators, all the women there, I give you all the highest due respect because I know it was not, uh it was not an easy journey for you. But to be there, coming from the other, you had to go through some extra hoops. You might not want to tell your peers there, but you had to go through some extra hoops and you know it too.
What? What can I say to that? Other than to say, I have absolutely walked a mile, lived a year in your life, lived a year in your skin, lived my whole life, uh struggling with the very issues that you've identified. So absolutely, yes. Absolutely, yes. So my name is Wanda Thomas Bernard from Nova Scotia. So Ms. Ms. Edwards, oh, go ahead.
Okay, I wanna a, I wanna add one more thing. Do I believe in prison? Do I believe in uh the abolishments of prisons? Absolutely, no. I deserved to be where I was. Criminal, yes. I do believe I was supposed to be removed from society, maybe for not the amount of time that I got. And that's another issue. And I also believe that under our Charter of Rights, that, forget about the religious part of it, because all the programs are Christian-based. And I saw a lot of the people that did the most praying. We're usually the poorest people and we usually do, what we do, we were so thankful for anything, we'll just be happy to to thank Jesus for everything, which is good. But I see a lot of people who's never surrendered to the Almighty and they get up there, they they're up there. So what I'm saying is, I think sometimes our rights are violated. Do I believe that I needed to be there? I, once again, yes. I take responsibility for what I did. But sometimes, and this is a systemic thing also, you have to look at the person who's sentencing you. They, do they take into certain, do they take in con- into consideration certain issues? No, they don't. Because it's impossible for them. Because their life experiences, they come, just like, they come from Mars and we come from Venus. So of course, we're gonna get the books thrown at us. And what do we have to do? We have to accept it and just ride it out and depend on our faith and depend on our supports. And our support sometimes, it's a ni- it's like a recycling door. Because our supports, which is sometimes our kids, we are their supports and they are our supports. What happens is, they don't have us there, so they fall into the bucket too.
Yes.
They have nowhere to go.
Yes, yes. So on behalf of the committee, I want to sincerely thank you, Ms. Edwards, and you, Ms. Charles, for your um for your testimony today. It was exceptional to hear from both of you. This is Black History Month and the theme is Black Canadian Women Celebrating Strength, Courage and Vis- and Vision. And the two of you have absolutely showed us such incredible strength today. And courage. It takes courage to tell your story. And I know that every time you tell your story, you're reliving some of the trauma that you've experienced. And I also know that the experience of racism, uh coupled with uh that intersection of sexism and we've heard about ageism as well and disability. That 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 those are, those are everyday realities and the experiences of those uh can put you into difficult waters to navigate. You are doing incredibly well. Uh I wish that everyone had a mentor, like the mentor that you have. And Ms. Edwards, I don't know if you can see me, but as, if you can, you can see that I speak with my hands as well. So thank you. Thank you both very much for your for your testimony. You've helped us to bring awareness to the the realities that black prisoners face, the barriers that you have to overcome, not just while incarcerated, but actually trying to transition back into community, back into society. So thank you both. I don't think it's the last time I will see either of you. And Ms. Edwards, I hope to meet you in person someday.
Definitely. Thank you all very much for having, oh, boy.
Thank you for, thank you for agreeing to do this. Thank you. Thank you both very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for listening to my truth.
Thank you for sharing your truth. Senators, before we adjourn, we have a budget before you for the next fiscal year. As you know, we are hoping to travel the week of April twenty-third to Edmonton and Vancouver. So I have a a proposal that I'll put forward. The question, is it agreed that the special study budget application for public hearings and fact finding in Edmonton, Vancouver and Abbotsford on the human rights of prisoners in the federal correction system for the fiscal year ending March thirty-first, twenty-nineteen be approved? Oh, question, yes.
I think you put in six senators? Is that? Uh is this, and perhaps it's for other committees that I'm asking this question. Uh we were always told to put in full committees?
That has changed recently.
Okay, so what is the rule then?
To put a more, there's no uh official ruling? It's just to be realistic with the amount.
Realistic, okay. So this is the steering committee's realistic uh-
And it's not meant to exceed the number.
Changed, having been served on that committee, as you well know. If the number were to change from six to, six to seven to eight, you would just go back and they will give you, and they will give you the money. That's the, that's-
It doesn't have to be done on the chamber floor.
No.
Once the-
It might come back to the chamber floor, I'm not sure. But it's not meant to, I know in the past, um and the reason that we got into saying that everybody should be down was because some committees were saying, well, we only want four to go. Well, who chooses? So this way, it's six, there were four who went to Toronto. I don't know how many are going to Nova Scotia, but-
I know, it's very difficult with-
Yeah, it is.
Some of us are having more trouble.
Yeah.
Uh the point I uh used to make when we had to put all of them in was that often is, that's what the press pu- picked up, is our global budget. But they never looked at what we actually spent, which was the realistic. I have no problem with that. Providing going back doesn't mean that you have to uh do something heroic to uh put the members back on. And so thank you for that.
So is it agreed that we approve the budget or are there any other questions? So it's agreed? Okay. Is it also agreed that the Subcommittee on Agenda and Procedure be authorized to approve the final version of the budget and for the Chair to submit to the Standing Committee on Internal Economy, Budgets and Administration? Agreed? Thank you all very much. I declare the meeting ended.